Okay, good evening, everybody. We're gonna get started. I'm gonna step aside and start with some introduction and a little bit of helpful information. And then we'll jump right into it. It's really amazing and important information, so. Hi, I just wanted to thank you all for coming to this event. So I'm Maribel Pride Club and partnership with Outreach. I wanted to introduce my Pride Club board, me myself. My name is Kate Crowe, but I prefer to just go by Crowe. And then I have Chloe Lewis, who is our social media manager. And I'm a woman myself. Danny Tate Rhodes, who is our vice president. And Wayne Matthews, who is our editor and coordinator. All of the people who helped with this event. And then you got Erin Stichman. And just thank you for being here. And I hope this very influential for you. Sorry I'm short, so I'm gonna pull over the microphone. But I'm Shannon Brown. I'm president of the Appalachian Outreach. And I wanted to say thank you all for being here. Thank you for coming as far as some of you have come. And I'm gonna pull out my teleprompter. I'm gonna make sure I cover everything on the cover glass. Welcome to this undergraduate first town hall meeting, where we will be educated about how hate crimes are defined, how to report those in the process, so that you can learn more about what to expect, what is, what isn't, and then what to do. So the material we might have some real examples in it. And sometimes those real examples can appear offensive. And they can elicit trauma responses. And so the purpose of these examples will be to help explain what a violation is. So if you're experiencing any discomfort, please feel free to sit outside, take a breath. And when you're ready, you can run in and join us. So before we begin, I want to thank Special Agent Boucher for being here and Special Agent Daniel for presenting tonight and for sharing all this helpful information. And for the opportunity to participate in this whole amazing people who are part of the criminal justice system that are out there helping to make sure that we're all safe. I wanted to take a moment to say thank you also for the information that we shared this evening. And to thank the Mayor of Pride Club and Crowe and Agent Rodriguez and Mayor of College for inviting us to have this occasion to learn, as well as the East Tennessee Civil Rights Working Group. The purpose of the town hall this evening is to learn and to be educated by professionals who are experienced, are experts in their field. And it's part of Appalachian Outreach's mission to help bring education to the community. Upon conclusion of the presentation, you'll have an opportunity to ask some questions. We will certainly walk around with a microphone. If you'll raise your hand if you have a question. Please hold your questions until the end, so we can get further, some further information. And I'm gonna ask that everyone respect the space that has been provided for us by cleaning up after yourselves when you leave. And by remaining aware that students are on this campus. They are living, they're learning. And it is our responsibility to be respectful while on this campus. We are in their house, so let's share our respect and appreciation for that. So we are in very, I put my teleprompter away. We are very fortunate to have Special Agent Martha Daniel to come to give us a mic. And I would like you to come up on the stage and get us started. So thank you.
Am I talking to myself here? Oh, that's right. What do you always say?
Hate crimes.
Thank you, everybody. How you doing?
Very good.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for making the time to come this evening. Wherever you live, anywhere else, but you made the time to come here today. Thank you very, very much. My name is, I am Uche, I just said Uche. I am the supervising special agent for the public corruption here, for the financial crimes and cigarettes approval in Knoxville, Kansas. Just got here to Knoxville about two months ago. So in words of my daughter, Knoxville is a chill. Thank you all for just welcoming. And thank you all for having us attend and having us do this. The reason for this outreach is basically to help be inspired to teach or educate other basically about hate crimes. Don't consider hate crimes what we don't see as hate crimes as per the law's being upgraded. But first, I'd like to talk about the FBI's priorities. Our priorities are as follows. To protect the United States from terrorist attacks. Protecting the United States against foreign intelligence and operations of espionage. Protecting the United States against cyber abuse attacks. Combat public disruptions at all levels. Protect civil rights. Let me say it again, civil rights.
Yes.
That's the number five priority. Combat transnational criminal opposition and entry crimes. Combat major white collar crimes. Combat significant crime crimes. Support federal, state, local, and international partners. Upgrade technology to successfully perform the FBI's functions. Let's circle back to the fifth one. That's why we're here, basically. So without further ado. If after Martha finishes her whole spiel about hate crimes and everything else, if you don't get anything out of it, I'd like you to understand one thing about them. There's just one thing. The major thing I'd like you to understand is this. We operate in this beautiful country called the United States of America. I was a kid, I was just unlucky to live in different parts of the world. I was born in a country that had a dictatorship, rule shop. Didn't have the freedoms that we enjoy in the United States. And this thing about the First Amendment, which in the United States Constitution guarantees the rights to free speech. It's not generally a crime to express intolerance towards others because of their race, religion, color, and ethnicity. However, it is against the law to engage in criminal acts based on intolerance. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. Martha, what would you?
So I've just learned my lesson in the Capitol, which you know. So I'm Martha. I am a civilian agent in Knoxville. I started in Los Angeles, and I came here a couple years ago. And it's fantastic, love it, love the green. Before we get started, I just want to talk a little bit about our interactive presentation. So you guys should have little white voters. Okay, so as we move through this presentation, there's gonna be a couple of spots where I'm gonna tell you it's time to vote. When that comes, there'll be an A option. I would vote A, the A button votes. Or the B option, or the C option. And that's gonna actually tally on screen. And then we will be able to get anonymous for the open room about what you guys know about civil rights. Okay, so the civil rights unit in Knoxville covers definitely the violence, hate crimes, which we already talked about today. We also do the color of law. So what color of law deeds? Here's when someone gained possession of authority and given to them by the government. Does something inappropriate, something violent, something that takes away your rights. We investigate that person. And then the other violation that we do is free loan access to sign businesses. So we're going to go with parenthood fire. That every community heard that from the FBI. But for today, we're going to focus particularly on hate crimes. You guys have official questions about the other violations. We'll each chat with me afterwards. So a hate crime is defined as a criminal offense against a person or property motivated in full form by that person's bias against race, religion, disability, ethnic or national origin, sexual orientation, gender or gender identity. So those are all the differing biases that people have that we as the FBI are willing to protect. So one of the things that comes up a lot is, as we discussed, there is free speech in this country. So a lot of times, people are confused about when something happens. Is it a hate crime or is it free speech? So free speech is anything non-threatening that is protected by the First Amendment. So someone can organize a gathering that is going to be focused on hateful rights and criminal actions within their right. Someone can circulate flyers or post on social media that say, "I don't like this group," or, you know, "I don't like brown haired people because they smell." They're also allowed to, like I said, post these views online that it's not a criminal offense, even though it may off my defensive. So as I said, non-threatening speech is protected. However, threatening speech is not. So a true threat is defined as serious communication of intent to commit an act of unlawful violence against another person. And that is not just the protection against the physical act. It's also protection against the fear that they're trying to break forward against other people. And also that the fear that they'll have the death will actually happen. So sometimes people, they think that sound like threats that we all know their company. So political radical is not a hate crime. So if someone says, "Gosh, I wish someone would just shoot all the insert little party, because I can't believe they're making me pay out." We know that these people are not actually going to attempt to take out them in their park. It is a political statement, although an unlawful one. Statements that threaten financial or emotional harm are not considered actual threats. So when someone makes someone cry because I don't like the color of their skin, that is not something that is a criminal act. And also, no matter how offensive, if there's no threat, it is still not a criminal act. So this is an example of what is a true threat. All of these examples that I've mentioned are real life examples. So in some states, we're going to kill you if you attempt to enter the ballgame across the field. We've already got rid of several like you. One was found in River Justice Lane. So some of the things that make this legitimate threat, they have threat assignments. They've targeted a very specific person or group of people. And they've even given specifics for how, when they're gonna do it or what's gonna occur to them. So this would be defined as a hate crime. When we're talking about true threats, you don't have to consider whether or not that person actually can do it right when they say it. If someone has said, you know, "Martha, I'm coming for you because I don't like your sexual orientation." I don't have to consider the fact that they live in Mississippi and don't own a car. It's considered a threat. In addition, I don't have to think about how stable they are. So someone having, making threats against them because of mental health crisis does not absolve them of the fact that it is a threat and a criminal offense. Okay, so this is our portion of the interactive. So on this first example, this is the garage of a Jewish family. And someone has written "die Jews" in the garage door. So I'm gonna have you all vote now. Do you believe that that is a hate crime or that that is protected by free speech? Yes, that's correct. Okay, so we have 46 responses. So let's see how we're done. So it's pretty split. Half of the group thinks it's a hate crime and half of the group believe it's not a hate crime. So this one is a threat, a hate crime. And the reason is because it was on this person's house. So it was targeting the person who lived there specifically because of the fact that they're Jewish and they're threatening violence. Okay, the next one. So we have a gentleman here in a t-shirt, which you guys agree. And it's going to be A slash one if you think it's a hate crime or B slash two if you believe that it's not a hate crime and it is free speech. So 100% say not a hate crime, 100% are correct. So this would be an example that is protected by free speech. Even if it is. Okay, so just to give you a little background, this is a protester outside of an LGBTQ girl. This was, again, our event that occurred. So if you believe that this woman is committing a hate crime, it's A slash one. If you believe she is not committing a hate crime and it's free speech, it's gonna be B slash. So a small group says hate crime and 81% says not a hate crime. And that 81% is correct. This statement, while offensive, it does not have an actual threat. They're not saying that they are going to shoot someone. They're merely thinking that statement is a threat. Okay, so this was an online post. It states, "If you're against the anti-ruling bill, you are probably a groomer, or at least you don't announce a ruling of 48-year-old children. Silence is simplicity." This is how works in Democrats, and I didn't make the rules. So this is the post. Someone is calling people groomers. Hate crime, not a hate crime. A1 for hate crime, B2 for not a hate crime. Okay, 100% say not a hate crime. You are correct. That is covered by free speech. If they call specific people groomers, for example, that might be a civil issue. But even at that point, it would not be a federal problem. Okay, so this one is some posts online by Open Coffin on the social media site called mine.com. So we have a post where he's put a gun overlay over the picture of a religious ceremony. And also this line on this, which says, "To murder your local Jew." So A, if you think this counts as a hate crime. And B slash two, if you believe that it's not a hate crime. Okay, so 80% say hate crime, 70% say not a hate crime. This one is considered a hate crime. This gentleman had posted over 600 posts, all in this sort of mind frame. 140 of those posts were anti-Semitic, 60 were pro-Nazi, and 59 greeted minorities in the LGBT community. So this gentleman was prosecuted and arrested by FBI and received 18 months for committing a hate crime. All right, last one. This one I will refer to here, taken from the local headlines, the local, the recent headlines. It was a Twitter post. I'm a bit sleepy tonight, but when I wake up, I'm going DEFCON 3 on Jewish people. The funny thing is, I actually can't be anti-Semitic because black people are actually Jewish. Also, you guys can toy with me and try and blackball anyone, whoever poses a challenge. So hate crime, A1. Not a hate crime, B2. Okay, we are 50/50. So this one is actually considered not a hate crime. And the reason is, they state, "I'm going DEFCON 3," but they haven't said that they're actually going to harm anyone. So it's kind of, it could be metaphorical to just say that you are going to go all in. One, it is a note that this particular poster, who I will not name, has made other similar posts, but none of those are considered hate crimes. All right, so now I'm gonna take you guys through a little bit of the legalese that surrounds hate crimes. There's absolutely four separate statutes, but we are only gonna talk about two today, which are pertinent. So that's statute 245, which is federally protected activities, and 249, which is the Hate Crimes Prevention Act. This can get a little tedious and very detailed, so just bear with me and just kind of, if you have questions, we can ask questions. All right, so 245, federally protected activities. This prohibits willfully injuring, intimidating, or interfering with any person by force or threat of which because of race, religion, color, or national origin. So this is our statute that would be applied for a threat, but when there's no actual physical act. So a couple of things that are important to note here, that you have to have a threat of course. It has to be based on one of those four biases only. And it has to interfere with a federally protected activity. So what is a federally protected activity? Public education, any public facility, employment, jury service, interstate commerce, or public accommodation. So you'll see here, we have a picture of someone who has written "kill Jews" on a bench that is outside of a public library. So they are threatening people of a certain religion, and they are doing it in a public facility. So it is considered a hate crime. So here's an example. We're gonna vote in. A white collar student placed a loose shirt around the statue of a black man on university campus. Is this a violation of statute 245? A slash one for yes, B statute 245 for no. Okay, so 84% yes, 60% no. This is considered a hate crime based on 245. This is an actual event that took place in 2014. Two white males were witnessed doing this at a college in Mississippi. They were physically, they were set guilty, and they received one count, earning them six months. Okay, so this is statute 249. This is a statute that applies when there's actual physical injury. So it has two parts. First part is bodily injury or trying to cause bodily injury. And when I say trying, I mean they've actually swung at you. They've shot at you. They've actually tried to commit a violent act. You know, they started walking into your house. And that is going to cover any bias of race, color, religion, or national origin. So again, it's just those four biases. And this statute is only when there's actual physical injuries. Doesn't include a threat. So the second part of this statute has a little bit of a broader bias range. It is bodily injury or attempted to do so with a weapon because of actual or perceived religion, gender identity, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, or disability. Now, this section has a little bit of an extra rule. And that rule is that it must include interstate commerce. So what if interstate commerce? That means that the subject committing the crime either traveled to do it, they crossed state lines, or international boundaries. They used a weapon. Weapons are typically from out of state. If the weapons cross state lines, they're hoping to call that interstate commerce. If it is done in a trade station, a bus depot, or on an interstate highway. And also, there's the option for a lost. Another one to think of is for telephone or your text message or your online message. Those ping to a server in another state, and then they ping back. So before you had said you're about to commit a crime against someone based on their gender identity, and you write, "I'm about to do this on your phone." Oh, you've now committed interstate commerce offense, so we can apply statute 249. You will note that currently, gender identity, gender, sexual orientation, and disability, all they are found on this statute. And this statute does not apply to threats. That is true. That is true. So, if someone makes, let's say, an online threat against someone for their sexual orientation, that they don't follow through on, they just write that they're going to do something to you, you've never met them before, you've never meet them, that is not something that is a hate crime. It is still very legal. It's what we call a heat infant. It might be considered an interstate threat, which is a federal felony. It might be something that is prosecutable legally or statewide, but it just doesn't fall under that hate crime umbrella. So, here we have an example. Before you guys vote, I'm actually going to adjust this one a little bit to what we just talked about. So, let's change this to a young white man punched an 81-year-old male of a sexual orientation, with an alternate sexual orientation, stating injuries that required him to be hospitalized for several days. The man recorded himself attacking the victim and making disparaging comments about the LGBTQ community. He called this the non-hate crime. So, we have a gentleman who is attacking someone based on their sexual orientation. He is recording himself on the cell phone while he does it, and stating exactly why he is attacking this person. So, A for against this, a crime covered by 249, and B2 if that is so.
I have a question. Did you post the video or did you do anything else?
Let's see, he was live posting. I don't know what you called it, if I'm obvious enough, I second this. Okay, so, almost everyone said yes, and that is correct. And exactly what you pointed out, what we need to make this a violation is the use of a phone with a message that's traveling through a server and traveling back, so we get that interstate commerce. So, as I mentioned, there are alternate remedies if it does not fall under the FBI investigation of a hate crime. There are civil lawsuits, defamation lawsuits. There are also state criminal proceedings. I know that TBI specifically investigates hate crimes, and some states, like Tennessee, Georgia, and South Georgia also have hate crime incidents for some of their violations. And I would say, even if people aren't sure that it is FBI, it's a hate crime. We always say, call the FBI, because we're going to do that report. We're going to look into the violation. We're going to say, oh, we know that this guy might have committed a state, and then we are going to actually contact the state and let them know what happened. Sometimes we work with them so that the investigation still receives all of the FBI resources. It's just a matter of who's actually taking the trouble. So, for us, anyone who feels that they have been the violation of a hate crime can report it to several places. You can call the FBI Civil Rights Dentator, which is myself. This telephone number here will take you to our general number. You just ask for FB handle, and they will forward you to me. You also, if you want to talk directly, can go on our website, FBI.com/kids, and enter a digital complaint. You can also put in 1-800-CALL-FBI and report your complaint as well, and the online ones and the 1-800-FBI will eventually be able to go to our office. And that is the official voting of our presentation. So, now we're getting to any questions, and I'm going to also push that on to our lovely group here, who are equally in help, although my girlfriend's over there.
If you do have any questions, if you would raise your hand, I'll introduce you to the other ones. Thank you. If you have any questions that have anything to do with legal issues, then the three gentlemen here, who are part of the Department of Justice, are the ones that can answer your questions for you. And so, Ethan, if you have a question, please raise your hand, and we'll come over to you with the microphone. And so, I see it was hands over here.
Hi, my name is Steve. I do have a question about, I don't know if it really requires a shit list, but I don't know if it is considered a hate crime. If someone intentionally tells someone to kill themselves, and they do actually proceed to act of dying, would that be considered a hate crime?
Okay, thanks. So, there you see the question. The question was essentially if someone online asks someone else, or tells someone else to kill themselves, whether or not that is a hate crime. I think the answer is no, it is not a hate crime. There is a statute that Marco mentioned, but in the federal law, it prohibits the interstate communication of a threat without regard to any sort of bias or prohibitive category. But here, it's instance, it doesn't sound like it's actually a threat, as it is a, I don't want to be flippant about it, it sounds quite unrequest, almost, and so it wouldn't really be a true threat that Marco mentioned before. Lisa, how do you feel?
So, I might have an incorrect understanding of this, but what you were saying earlier is that if someone is physically present and makes disparaging comments and accidents in any ways, and makes you legitimately scared for your safety, that it's not necessarily a crime, it's a personal limit, but if you do it online, it is. My question is, if they're saying hate speech and things of that nature, why is that not a crime when they can actually physically, right in the moment, do something to you?
I'll make sure I understand the question. So, if someone, you're taking someone in front of you, and they say, "I'm going to..."
Well, for example, I've kind of heard you showing me pictures where it says, like, "die Jew in," or something like that. If that person is directing it front of me, saying things like that, why is that a tactic?
Gotcha. So, and some of it is semantic. If they say, "I wish so-and-so would die," that isn't a threat, that is stating of what they wish. If they say, if they're trying to rally people to hurt someone when they say it, that is more in the threat realm. And then, whether or not it's a hate crime also depends on which, if it's not actual physical, which of the biases that they are basing out of.
So, I guess it's more if they're trying to bring in an effort?
Yes, if they're actually, if they're like, "die a couple of people, die a couple of people," and they're like, "hey, guys, come on, we need to do this," that is a threat. Even though their words aren't actually a threat, they're trying to get a problem. However, if it's just a, "I wish that person would," it's just their opinion.
Yeah, so, I was wanting to understand, for business owners, like myself, dealing with different situations about the drag shows and a lot of other issues that have occurred here in Knoxville, this area. As a business owner, I want to learn, how do I educate myself and my staff and my patrons to recognize when a situation is a hate crime? Take a hate threat to then a hate crime via the online keyboard warrior things that we've got going on? Or is it emails that we're getting sent? So, I just didn't know where the boundary was, where it's like, here's a threat, and then it becomes, here's the, you know, where is that line?
Right. So, for us, I would say that if you feel, if that person feels that their physical safety is actually threatened, first, we always say, "No, no, no," and then call us, because we don't respond immediately. We come back to the fact and review what happened. And then, if that person feels threatened, after they've dealt with getting somewhere and getting safe, just tell us. That is my job to literally get through whether or not it is. I have more than half to do it. Ethan, if you're over there, call me, email me, I don't care. I will absolutely look into it and then kind of tell you where you're falling on that question.
Well, I guess it's more the question as a business. I would say that they're attacking me personally, but it's like, I run all the social media for the business. I read all the emails, and so if they're coming at it as like, as a collective of them coming to us as like threatening to the business, or like coming at it because we accept and allow the LGBTQ, and we allow all races, and we don't care what everybody's standing, you know? Come to our location and enjoy that, and you're such a coming out, it's like, targeting with the hate, wanting to ruin our business, and then coming as a collective, bringing like groups of them, and not to our business, but of a, you know, we're getting flooded with emails and calls. And so, I guess that's where it's like, where is that line drawn? Where do we, as a business, rather than individuals, is that something that...
Okay, I just have to understand. Why, it's not necessarily my personal self, it's more of a...
You go ahead and personally, I want to hear what you're pointing at.
Yeah, so, as far as what I wouldn't have liked to hear is harassment and protests of the victim. So, it doesn't actually fit federal hate crime, but that is something that I guess if it is a certain level of harassment, it could be civil suit or hopefully, like, a local law enforcement issue? I'll give them artificial candor.
Yeah, the only thing I would add then is, for it to be a true threat, it has to be to a specific person or... So, if it's just a record of the business, it wouldn't fall under a hate crime or a true threat. You may have other avenues to stop that activity, whether it's, you know, some kind of civil proceeding or, you know, something like that outside of the criminal realm, but it wouldn't fall in the judicial area of the true threat.
Okay, so it's more like it's coming at the owners of the business? I'm also that, so I feel like it's coming directly to us in that sense of like, personally, as like, we're... I don't want to put it out, I can let us talk to you later, without putting out for too much other people how like the situation is, and if that's something where it's like crossed that line, whether it's local law enforcement, or if it's really coming with bigger issues of certain groups.
Yeah, the only other thing I would say to follow up is, you know, it wouldn't have to be somebody who like actually made a decision, but they made a threat, say, you know, the business of it, or the person who owns this business. That makes it a little bit closer to the specificity, because it caught you out. But I would reiterate what Marco said. If there is a threat that comes in, and you subjectively feel threat and threat, you don't try to think through this attachment like when you call 911, call the FBI, because in that situation, you want to be somebody to look into.
Scott, we're going to have a quick impact from a week from now.
Hi, Martha, I'm just speaking on the phone and via text, I think. My name is Lisa Soski. I own Saffron Books and Cafe. I've had two years of garbage throwing myself, my businesses, and my staff. At what point does someone that's in a tragedy, that's on fire, does it become a crime? Because at this point, I've contacted the FBI, I've contacted the City Mayor Police Department, I've contacted the local Sheriff's Department, I've contacted the city mayor's, I've contacted county members, and it keeps coming. It's a nonstop struggle down my throat, every damn day. For events that I host, doesn't matter what it is, it's coming at me. At what point, please, does it become a crime?
I just want to make sure I have your consent before I...
Please do.
No, please do. Usually it's up with us, but if you don't, it's, we can never tell the people.
I think almost everyone in this room has contacted the FBI more than once. I don't know if it's more than, more than once, I've asked for it for all of my business because of the amount of hate. You led me from a certain couple of so-called pastors and a quote conservative dipshit emailed it to me. He hasn't lived here long after that, damn saying.
So, as you mentioned, we have certainly been looking through what you've sent us. What I haven't seen yet is what I would call a threat. I 100% can see what you've talked about, that's the most definitive of the cases, but I have not seen anything that raises it to what you would say is a federal statute. I will also say, however, even if it's not, it always has to tell us, because the FBI, kind of like I said, we don't tell the people. So, you might not be the only person giving me that complaint. And I'm not talking about innocent people or innocent persons, thank you, but some type of cases, you think of the wrong person, and then the FBI is looking into it, and we realize that we just had a behavior problem, or maybe someone else has to be handling it. Again, that is not specific to this case whatsoever, and I'm encouraging everyone to let someone's happening, especially when you're beginning to feel threatened because of the amount. Is there anything that you feel that we've missed that didn't just make that?
I feel like that would be where you can talk to the FBI.
Okay.
At what point does City Mayor try to create a, you know, a crime, including somebody that I met? I've settled it down, but I don't really want to be clear. I've had a camera, I've had all of this stuff, I mean, there's many inherent policies. I love dating the world. And at what point does the garbage that gets me online cost me my business, my livelihood, or worse? Because of the amount of crap that gets served instead of my respect?
I'm going to see if anyone's in higher ranks than they want to.
I want to know if they get their, from a, if that's necessary, if it is a bad business.
So... It's hard for me to say, because I don't know any specifics of the, you know, of what's going on, and the one I want to say, so it's really hard for me to, you know, to analyze the facts, the elements that we're talking about here. It sounds awful, so I feel, but I just can't say anything more specific about, you know, about it.
What if they're just saying that all the drag entertainers at that establishment are brutal? What about something like that?
Sorry, I didn't hear, I couldn't hear you.
Anything that says an establishment that has drag entertainers that work there? What happens if the person who is saying all these things is saying specifically that these drag entertainers are great? They're saying that they're good, or like...
Sorry, my name is Joshua, hi. What I was saying is, if this establishment is not receiving threats of violence, what about if this establishment is receiving responses as them calling all the drag entertainers that work there in this establishment rumors, or calling them pedophiles, or saying that we run a satanic cult, and that one of us, who is a drag entertainer, is a satanic cult leader? What about something like that?
So, I want to try to make, you know, a demarcation between what we're talking about, what Special Agent May was talking about in terms of an actual threat, somebody saying, "I'm going to do this to you because you are this way." That that is a specific threat that is potentially prosecutable as a federal crime. You know, describing someone in a certain way, using offensive language... You know, describing someone in a certain way, using offensive language, no matter how abhorrent it is, is generally going to be protected speech in almost every case. And as offensive as it is, as bad as it is, usually the FBI and the US Attorney's Office is not the entity that's going to be able to do anything about that. You may have other ways to do it. There may be, there may be civil avenues to go down to get people to stop doing that. In terms of prosecuting you under federal law, we can't do that with offensive speech.
Wait, sorry. My name is Mike. I'm a local voter here in Palm County in Knoxville. One instance that we keep getting through social media is this, these roots that Lisa Soski was talking about. One thing that I wonder is a threat, something that we receive quite often through social media, is local religious officials saying that they ensure their followers that they will, for example, I get a thing coming up on November 25th, and I receive posts where these religious officials have said this exact sentence, "We ensure our followers of this page," their social media page, "we ensure our followers that that event will not happen." Is that a threat? And that's, that's vague. I get that that's a vague statement, but they're saying in public, "We ensure that people get that event stopped."
So I, I think you've sort of answered the question by saying that it's vague. It just is. I mean, it sounds threatening. There's no doubt about that from a common sense perspective. It sounds threatening, but in terms of the specificity that the statute requires, I don't see it.
So following what Mike and Lisa said, a lot of these are aware of this, these pages, they post pictures of women that are in business hours. They give the location, sometimes personally, and one of the, and they specify they're LGBT, they're drag performers, they're gay, they're whatever. And then one of their followers does something. What happens then? That's what our fear is.
May I add on to that real quick? Hi, I'm Shannon. I'm on the steering committee for Blood Pride. I was in charge of children's activities for Blood Pride. So after our presentation, a lot of things happened. One that, my colleagues, while I was at the meetings, a pastor of one of the churches that likes to attack LGBTQ people here in the area posted a Facebook Live saying that even our own sweet Jesus said that it would be better for one of these people who had this event to tie a mole stone around him and he's going to see when he's across on these children and stuff. And that's our own sweet Jesus saying that. So take that for what you know. I feel like they run right up to the line. And do they know where the line is? So, there was something else that I was going to say, but it's completely left my line for telling the lovely thing that happened. So where, where is the line? Another person who actually is in this room right now tried to find out the identity of the high school teacher who was leading our team activities for the day. And while they didn't find out who that person was, it was very scary for that teacher. It felt like it was going towards a doxing. It was, it was a doxing. I think I've essentially, actually, yeah. So where, what do we do with that stuff? I know it's in my party area, I don't have a piece of your head and your head, I feel like I'm giving you a migraine, but... Where react with that stuff? It runs right up to the line and then it happens.
So, honestly, this is something, um, with, I think the FBI, we, a lot of times are what you would call reactive investigators. So we're the people that come in and do something to that person. And that's why we talk a lot about the bodily injury that's been attempted or has happened. And that's also why I would say, if your safety is, if you're bodily secure right that second, I'm not safe. We're not the law enforcement that you call. I think Paul, you're about it. Okay. And so, you know, and you can say that, they know, people know where the line is and they're going up to the line and they're stopping. And I am very sorry, obviously, for any, I know it's hard to deal with people with language, but we also, we aren't going to go after someone before something happens because we also respect people, all of their rights on both sides. And so for the FBI, usually there has, there's typically an event or a planning of an actual event. We are not the agency that comes in and tells someone before something has happened to get one. The gentleman just mentioned that Jake, if you're a guy, probably do almost the same thing. I can't talk about that currently, it is an ongoing investigation. I think that we are, we're just like, in place if something's going on, we don't talk about it. I'd say that... Another question?
Before we move on, I'd like to just inject a line. My name is Scott Davis. I'm the Assistant Special Agent Chairman of the FBI out of Knoxville. I oversee all of our programs, including the time management department, the election program. Every day, we get complaints from the public that deal with this type of thing. And every woman is one of the same type of, they have, but every woman has to meet a specific, a threshold for us to deal with a charge of federal. A lot of these guys, whether it's targeting sexual orientation or a Jewish organization, or any other type of religious organization, they have to meet a specific threat that we can point to that there's no doubt this person is posing a specific threat of violence to someone. And every event that comes in, we have to measure against that standard. We deal with it every day. Martha, grocery, these things, and Mike, with business owners, they have to meet a specific threat, but it's just hate speech, like Marco. There's just nothing that we can do that lets person, person be protected. And that's across the board. That allows anybody in here to make any statements they want about how they feel or how they want to dress or anything that they want to do that also goes the other way, that other people can voice their opinion on what they feel. It's like people should be in my favor. It's federal law that we work through, but it's very tough for us to make this charge. We don't charge a lot of these because it's very difficult to hit the standards. Not that we don't try. We put it together, a lot of times we take it, if these shows are with this attorney's office, they're the ones that actually make the decisions if a crime is charged. So we put together the investigation of the UBS, we have time to do all the data and statements and gather this fund data, whatever it is, put it together and take it to these guys. But these cases are not easy to charge. Now, a lot of these guys online that are posting these crazy comments, they know where the line is. You've got a guy out on the east side that hates the Jewish population and we get hate mail from him every week. He wishes they could do this, or he wishes that this, but he won't say anything to me to get an actual charge on it. It's not like we don't try. It's just simple, but...
I have a man that we're here tonight to talk about the definition of galloway of hate crimes, but just to go back to that first question, the reference, if someone does tell you, then encourage you to unalive yourself, which from what we understand now is a lot of those threats, people change and run a line of harassment or threats, or just someone who has been affected by the worst scenarios of online harassment, and also have been made aware of threats from the Patriot Church.
Is that an impressed person asking that question? All right. We can talk to you about this again.
I want to hear what you guys say about that. I'll reiterate, she's professing that we represent some specific texts.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you're time is running out, you know, and the clock is ticking, the signals are time, time is up, has come upon us. While all of you are expressed today, you're all touching. We feel you, we hear you. That's why we're here. If we hadn't waited, we wouldn't have come. We appreciate that you're expressing yourselves, and that's why we're here. You're not for heaven, you're part of society, you pay taxes, that's why we're here. What I'm trying to say is this. If you're a victim of hate crime, please contact us. Anybody, anybody can be a victim of hate crime. We all thank you for the time this evening. We appreciate your patience. And if you have additional questions, since we're rounding up, we'll have time to contact Shannon so she can send them to us so we can discuss them further. And until then, thank you very much for the time and I appreciate the time of us.
I would, I would say, we all so very much appreciate your time and teaching us tonight of light, even as such a special feature. I really appreciate it. Appalachian outreach, we all so thankful that you're here, that we're here, and you've been there for us so carefully. Again, the DOJ guys, the US Attorney's, thank you so much. I appreciate it, I appreciate all of you being here. Thank you.